Again, call the meeting to order. Go ahead and go through roll call. Lori Blake? Lori Emma? Eric? Mike?
Mike Sharon Hebron.
Dr. Benson Clark?
Judy Benson Clark Marlboro.
Mary?
Mary Kuchewski Marlboro.
Joe?
Joe Clancy Hebron.
Jessica? Carrie?
Carrie, for all you know Marlboro.
Gabe?
Gabe Marks Hebron.
Eric?
Eric Shostakow Andover.
Sue?
Sue Stoffey Marlboro.
Okay, and Mike Morris Hebron. To circle back real quick, see if Lori, did she join us? No? And/or Jessica, did she join us? No, alright. From the administration, Scott?
Scott Wesley Acting Superintendent.
Penny? Penny? Okay, great, thank you. Dr. Strosi?
Margaret Strosi Middle School Principal.
Eva?
Eva Gallup Business Manager.
Do we have any other administrators?
I don't believe so.
Okay, and Student Representative Lily? Okay, and Rowan?
Rowan Ackeland Hebron.
Okay, I miss anybody? Okay, great. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, if I could, just one thing. Gabe, if I could ask you again to serve as our timekeeper. And the only other thing I would just ask is, thanks to some veteran board support from Sue, she reminded me of a couple of key things that I need to make sure we implement. So we went a little long on one of the meetings in the past, and so when we get to the 9:30 mark, we definitely need to revisit whether or not we're going to continue the meeting or if we're going to bail on it because it's a policy issue. And then also, just if that comes to be, if it looks like we're pretty far off bat, please bring that up so that we may visit some of the items that we don't necessarily have to go through. We may vote to table some of them. So if you could kind of keep an eye on that for me, I'd appreciate it. Alright, at this point, public comment. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro, community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. At this time, is there anybody present that would like to present for public comment? Please.
My name is Carol Guyer. I'm resident of Hebron. And I'm here to be support. I'm representing Hebron Coalition on Diversity and Equity. And I'm here to see the expected presentation by the students with regard to the Columbus Day proposals that they have. And I look forward to hearing that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else present? Please, sir.
My name is Gary Gotther. Also a resident here of Hebron. I hope this is the right venue, but I just wanted to comment with respect to what I'm seeing happening in our schools, the use of movies as a form of education. Seems like that's been a pretty regular appearance. So far, my children have watched movies titled 12 Years a Slave, Maria Full of Grace, Motorcycle Diaries, and just today I learned The Seat Inside. I won't go into detail with these movies, but my opinion on that is movies can be very subjective. I don't have time to look at these movies in advance of them being presented to my children. I might too. I get these permission slips last notice. I don't have enough time to be able to spend time to look at these movies thoroughly, to have an opinion. And I would like to have an opinion. So unfortunately, my children are going to watch these movies. And I feel that there's some messaging in there that may be inappropriate, whether it's subtle. Sometimes it's very strong messaging. And as you know, every movie could be interpreted a little bit differently from one viewer to the next. To watch or view critics and reviews on those movies, there's all kinds of different opinions. And why movies are being used as a form of education is beyond me. I feel that it's inappropriate, should not be there. Teachers should find other ways to educate their children rather than relying on movies.
Thank you. Is there anyone online? I'm sorry, anyone else present? Is there anyone online that would like to present public comment? Eric, anybody raising their hand?
One person.
Oh, what's the name?
Amy Demadio.
Amy, if you are online, if you'd like to go ahead and present public comment?
Hi, my name's Amy Demadio, and I am a resident of Hebron. And I'm here to support the students in their conversation about having Columbus, instead of Columbus Day, having Hebron support and represent, or RAM support and represent Indigenous Peoples' Day. I think it's a better reflection of who we are as citizens and acknowledges of Indigenous Peoples' Community. That's first thing. Second thing, I would just like to make a comment about the gentleman who just commented about the movies. I believe strongly in having multi-different ways of presenting information. We're really working hard, hopefully the school is really working hard, to develop our students to be critical thinkers. And things are going to be presented from one side and another side, and they need to learn and challenge themselves to develop a means of deciding what is real, what's not real, how they can view it and how they not view it. And that's where the education comes from. And that skill that they're trying to teach is going to transcend any curriculum. And so just want to point out that movies are an important part of a curriculum, if it's part of the curriculum. They're not showing The Three Stooges. They're throwing, they're showing things that are probably in the content of the material being presented, and it's another venue. Some kids don't learn very well with just hearing lectures. They can watch it, and then they read it, and then they can, there's a whole richness in providing different ways of presenting information. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online to present public comment? Yes, ma'am, I can see you raising your hand online. Go ahead. I think you're on mute.
Indeed. Lily Rhodes, Slocum Road in Hebron. I'm looking forward to hearing the student presentation regarding the Columbus Day. I'm curious what your thinking is, and I'm encouraged by our students' initiatives on some complicated issues. So I'm looking forward to hearing their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Anyone else raising? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, question. Are we going to have public comments afterwards? Or is it just?
There'll be a second round of public comment at the end, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else online? Eric? No? Alright. Item number four, add or deletion of any agenda items. Anyone? Go ahead, Sue.
I'd like to suggest adding a topic around a walk to support mental health.
Is this the Marlboro event that's planned? Or is this not an event that doesn't exist right now?
It's an event that's being planned, and I wouldn't necessarily say it's just Marlboro. I would say it's all three towns. But yes, I believe it's that topic, yes.
Okay, is that, were we going to do that?
Yeah, so if we would just need a, the board members present and online, we'd need a vote of two-thirds of our members. So at least six people to approve the addition of that agenda.
Okay.
And then we would just add it to the new business.
Okay, that's fine. So Sue, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add the topic of a walk to support mental health.
Okay.
Awareness, yeah.
Alright. Sorry, was that you, Carrie?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion on the subject? Okay, hearing no discussion. Go to a, we'll do a roll call since we need two-thirds. Lori? Mike?
Yes.
Dr. Judy Benson Clark? I'm sorry, Judy, you might be on mute.
I'm sorry, I don't think I could unmute. Can I give a tiny bit of information?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, this is something that's been talked about honestly since about last Easter, so for about a year. And we see it as a community event where people from the RAM and the Greater RAM community would be involved to just honor everyone. Everyone belongs, you know, to do away with stigmas. So far, NAMI has definitely said yes to use their name. They're the National Association, I think, of mental illness. We cannot make the day of their walk because Teresa Brice, Jill, and I both have children graduating college that day. So we're looking at the first weekend in June. And I can tell you that everybody is being exceptionally, exceptionally helpful. Our first selectmen, our safety people, for, you know, anything to do with traffic. It would just, we're thinking around the lake right now. And AHM, I think, wanted to have a conversation with Amy, Amy, excuse me, Sue Stoffey and me tomorrow. So we're just looking at it as something, you know, it's a timely issue, it's a relevant issue, and just some kids would be home from college and just that, kind of the hope of the messages, everyone matters. So I'm a yes for it.
Okay. Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jessica? Carrie?
Yes.
Gabe?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And Mike, I will vote yes. Alright, that Carrie, so we will add that to the agenda.
Mike, the only other, this isn't an add or delete, but I'd like to suggest we move 10-4, which is the discussion on possible action regarding the race survey, to the spot immediately following the student presentation, only because we have Tressa Giudorno, the Executive Director of H.M., joining us remotely. So that would allow her to get to that agenda item without having to sit through the others, so.
I don't believe we need a motion for that, but is there anybody that on the board that has an issue with that, with reorganizing that piece? Alright, then we will do that. Okay, Student Representative reports. Lily?
Hi, everyone, nice to see you. Just gonna jump right into it. Prom for juniors is, I think, this weekend, so that's really exciting. Finally, I think it's the season of the holidays, everything like that. And then prom for seniors is a month from right there. So I think theirs is April 22nd, and ours is May 21st. And in order to purchase a ticket, which at least for seniors is $80 this year, you have to pay your class dues, which is $30 a year, so it's a little more than $20. And another thing that I wanted to add at the last meeting, but forgot, we have an Instagram for both the junior and senior girls for them to show off their dresses, which I think is a really fun way to get, you know, everyone involved and excited about prom. You can post a picture of your dress, and it's more of like, post a picture of your dress, nobody else spies it. But it's also fun to see what everyone's wearing. And then there's obviously one for seniors as well. And I'm sure you all know, this past week was April break, and then a bunch of people were traveling now that it's more accessible since COVID has sort of died down. But I'll be interested to see the case count because although to get into the US, you have to test negative, a lot of people traveled like within the US, and I'm not sure how the testing works for that. And even there can be some false negatives all the time, there could happen. And then in terms of college, more and more people are committing. May 1st is the last day, and you can commit at all. And that's creeping up on us. And we also have an Instagram for that. You can show where you commit, if you're playing a sport or a major. So that's really exciting. Also gets people excited about post-secondary education. And there's also scholarships that are available, like in Hebron and for Marlboro. Some are just for Hebron, some are just for Andover. There's a lot of different ones that cater to different types of people who are going into post-secondary education. Like, I saw there was one about firefighters. It's a lot for education, minorities, everything like that, which I think is really great. And then I think two weeks from today is going to be first AP exam. That's not just for seniors, for juniors and sophomores as well. But from, I believe, like May 2nd onward, they go toward until the end of May. So next week is probably going to be a tough week for students because they're all going to be studying for exams. It's sort of a big deal. So I just want to let you all know about that. And then lastly, I want to comment on the France-Morocco trip that was offered by the French teachers. I do not take French, but I went on it anyway because I thought it would be fun. And it was. I think it's a great opportunity for students, whether they've traveled or not, to get a better grasp on other cultures and other languages around the world. And it's a very accessible way for students to travel just because like, the trip's already planned, and parents don't have to worry about making all these reservations. They just sort of have to sign up and get everything situated with passports and everything like that. We got to meet like our passports executive, and he was very nice. I think it's a great trip, and I think if we could do more, that would be awesome. On a more personal note, I want to let everyone know that I committed to University of Vermont. I'm going to be studying Global Studies and hopefully a minor in Broadcast Journalism. Thank you.
Wow, congratulations.
Thank you.
Rowan?
Alright, so yeah, she already kind of talked a little bit about junior prom, but just so like, you know, just continue to add on to that. I know that a lot of kids are excited. And like Lily said, you know, with the suits, tuxedos, tuxedos, the dresses, everybody's talking a lot about it. And it's exciting that we're able to, you know, have this event after the past few years, you know, having quite worked out the way students have wanted with COVID. So, but yeah, it's a Saturday night, Glastonbury Hills Country Club. And it says 6 o'clock goes to 10, I believe. So yeah, obviously, everybody's looking forward to that. And then I also want to touch on the Evening in the Arts event, which I know a lot of board members probably know about already. It's on Thursday, June 2nd. Doors are open at 4:45. It's going to be $5 per, $5 a ticket for general admission, but it's free for students K through 12, young children and seniors. And what you should expect there is art show, cafe performances. There's also a nice dinner buffet with a nice meal from Gina Marie's. And tickets for those meals are $25, and they must be pre-ordered by May 12th if you plan on getting dinner there. And then there are also art awards, and there is a nice concert with the chorus members and the band members in the auditorium. And I just wanted to touch on the fact that every single member of the RAM Music Department is extremely excited for this because similar to like, you know, other events in the past, we haven't been able to hold this, like, well, we've held like virtual ones, but like not actual in, you know, in person. So it's really exciting for the community. Kind of like this is an opportunity for each member of the community to come and witness music and art, so.
Awesome, I agree. Alright, Chair report. Hope everybody had a safe, happy vacation. Got back, and I know my son was less than thrilled to dive back in on Monday morning. But I hope everybody gets back in. Again, I share Lily's concerns about whether or not we'll see any spikes. And, you know, we're going to continue to work through it. And I think as long as we continue to do the mitigation things and the, to the extent that the tracing is necessary, I think it'll be fine. Yeah, I'll be interested to see how that works too. To answer your question, there are no real testing requirements within the United States. My family and I went to Florida, came back, and there really wasn't any testing requirements. Other than that, I have nothing else to report. Superintendent?
Great, thank you. Well, I'll pick up where Lily left off in thanking, from the district's perspective, Nadine De Roy, Olivia Sanye, and Suzanne Salome, the three teachers that chaperoned the trip to France and Morocco. As you can imagine, you know, we put our trips on hold for the last couple of years. And so to be the first trip out was just a little nerve-wracking, to say the least, and they came through with shining colors. They, I know, were very grateful for the students and the great job that you guys did representing RAM in the United States. And the fact that we had such a successful trip is really heartening, particularly since one of the agenda items to follow is going for the trip to Spain next year. So hopefully that pushes the wheels a little bit further than that. And to pick up where Rowan kind of left off with the Evening in the Arts, this is always a special evening for RAM because it really highlights all of the talents within our community. And, you know, every month, we sit below the RAM Music Department, a best community for music education. And if I'm not mistaken, the music department is derelict in not including all the dates. But that's okay because they have another date to add to it. We were just listed as the, in the top 5% of all high school music programs for 2020, 2021. So we have some more dates to add. So congratulations to the music department. Erica is one of those members, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Certainly, the, one of the most momentous days in our lives is coming up, May 3rd, which is the referendum for the three, well, two of the town budgets and the RAM operating and capital budget. If any of you need any more flyers to distribute, just let me know, and I'll be happy to do whatever I can to get those in your hands so we can share those out. I want to get the word out, and I'm working with the towns and making sure that they have all that information. So hopefully, as many people as possible will get that information. The Repriest did a nice overview of the budget and where it is. So I was pleased with that. We'll have, our next meeting will be a very brief meeting on May 2nd, where we'll essentially meet to recess into the referendum. So we're just going to meet to formally send the budget to referendum on the 3rd. So, and then I hope to be calling each of you and congratulating you on a successful budget referendum, so.
Alright. Item eight, consent agenda. So the approval, the minutes are shared. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
So moved, Sue Stoffey.
Excuse me, there is an issue with those.
Okay.
It indicates that I voted against the 0.5 position for the child.
Okay.
Yeah, that needs to be changed. For, not against it. And so I'm assuming there was somebody on the list that's probably listed incorrectly.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. We'll make sure that's corrected before it gets posted.
So then what do we need to do as far as the approval? And just all pull them off?
We can approve it with the correction.
With the correction, okay. Alright, any other questions? Thank you, Carrie, for putting that off. Alright, subject to that, making that one specific change, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second.
Okay. So Sue, motion, Carrie, is that Mary?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Any against? One dog? Alright. With the exception of the dog that carried. Alright, personnel communications, 8.2, Scott.
So we have essentially three letters to consider. One is a letter from Dwayne McDuffie, notifying us of his intent to retire at the end of the current school year. And then the other two from Ashley Ward and Sarah Allen, tendering their resignations as of the end of the school year.
And do we need to do a motion to?
We do, yeah. My recommendation with that was we approved.
So is there a motion to approve the acceptance of the letter of retirement and letters of resignation as described?
I'll make a motion.
Alright, thank you. And a second for that? Gabe, alright? Any discussion? Alright, hearing none. We'll do it, just a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, that motion carries. 9.0, old business, does not appear that we have anything for that particular item. So move on to item 10, new business. We have the student presentation requesting modification to the Columbus Day holiday listed on the RAM calendar.
So we have a, many clubs within the RAM community. One, the Student Activism Club. And the Student Activism Club has been active for years within the RAM community and has done everything from promote various causes to bringing and organizing kind of community-wide events immediately following the part of the shootings. The activism club was incredibly instrumental in bringing the school together and supporting each other and members within our community. So the activism club has a presentation they'd like to make to the board regarding the naming of one of the holidays that is a day off for RAM, Columbus Day. And they have a proposal they'd like to present to the board.
Please have at it. If you'd like to just stand up where you are, if you'd like to use the, the volume, please do so.
And Mr. Nunes will have your presentation on the board.
Thank you so much for having us. Unfortunately, some of our club members couldn't make it due to the jet lag from the France trip and other sports events. So we are the RAM Activism Club, and we are here to propose the change from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. So who are we? We are, of course, the RAM Activism Club, and we are working on making positive changes in our community and our school. In the past, we've worked on helping the school learn about mental health, you know, bringing awareness and providing resources to students who really want to help in that mental health sector and just want to improve the overall community at the school. We have also touched on voting, you know, bringing awareness to the students about who the candidates are so that they are aware of elections that are going on, big or small. We're also working on activism techniques. How can we be better activists within our community? How can we make positive change that we support? And how can we bring a voice to other groups who may not have that voice? This year, we helped create the bulletin board for Hispanic Heritage Month, bringing light to some of those individuals in those communities that sometimes aren't seen in our communities as much. We've also promoted the RAM Raptors Nest, providing food and toiletries for students who may need it in the community. So Columbus Day origins. It started as a way to celebrate Italian immigrant heritage. During the Gilded Age, a lot of Italian immigrants were stereotypes for following their massive movements from Italy, of course. And so it was officially made a federal holiday in 1937. Additionally, this creation of this holiday was supported by the Knights of Columbus because they wanted to have a Catholic hero, someone to look up to. And the Italian immigrants used this in the same way. They wanted to have a figure to look up to, to feel like they belonged. So celebrations can range from large-scale parades and events to non-observances. Certain states do not even recognize Columbus Day as an official holiday.
So it's acknowledged as a day of observance or recognition, not a holiday in a lot of places, which means that though it's named Columbus Day, it's not really celebrated or recognized. And it's a paid holiday for government employees rather than an actual celebration, which kind of goes along with that. And why we believe this should change? We kind of think that the term is outdated. And as I said before- And as I said before, it isn't really widely celebrated, though it's named Columbus Day. Not many people actually celebrate it by that and just use it as a sort of holiday or day off. We would like to promote inclusivity, going along with the mascot change. We believe that we need to move away from those kind of stereotypes of Native Americans and promote like the positive image of the native groups in the area. Yeah, as I was saying. And it would align with the curriculum at RAM. And a lot of classes, like in art, English, social studies, and world language, we learn about the native populations and this would just go along with that. For example, I know in my US history class, our first unit was all about native populations and how they were complex and how they differed across the United States.
Okay, so speaking of that mascot change, many major Native American organizations oppose the use of native mascots and names. That's obviously why we changed ours. But I know that in that changing, a lot of people felt like we were kind of doing the opposite. We were kind of covering up, you know, by getting rid of the Saint John, covering up the native heritage and history. And by renaming Columbus Day to this, we will be able to kind of try to help bring that back because I know a lot of people were in opposition to that. Talking about changing the mascot, we saw Mr. Leslie said it's the right thing to do and we believe this is also the right thing to do. And to show kind of how other students from other districts also think like this, RAM was once booed by the opposing team the one time a student did dress up as the mascot of the Saint John.
So regarding other schools, a lot of the schools here you see on the list have made the change to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And a lot of them have also, rather than switch just to Indigenous Peoples' Day, some of them have just regarded the day as a fall holiday or professional development day rather than switch to Indigenous Peoples' Day. But as you can see, a lot of them are in the area. So it shows the support that other like communities have for this idea. So recently, Bridgeport also made the change in 2015. They switched to Indigenous Peoples' Day. A board member cited that students should be taught true history and not the falsehood that Columbus was a hero. This board member also stated that Columbus didn't find anything, there were already people here. So this school hopes to promote accuracy in teaching history. Believe that changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day would better reinforce accuracy in education, which is an idea that we also support.
I'm sorry, I can't see that one point, but you made a, a member, the board member cited what? I can't see it.
Oh, they also stated that Columbus didn't find anything, there were already people here.
Okay.
Thank you so much for having us. It means so much to us. We thank you for even considering us and like letting us present here. So much.
Yeah, we hope you use our slide and make a good informed decision about changing the name.
Good. Thank you very much. If you could just make yourselves available for potential questions here. I'm sorry, somebody raised their hand online? Here.
Judy says she'll be right back.
Oh, okay, that's it, all right. Okay, open up to the board, questions, comments, concerns?
I think this is a great idea. I would support. I don't have the vote, but.
Anyone else? Any of our board members online have a comment?
I actually have a comment.
Go ahead, Carrie.
Okay, so first of all, I think they did a very nice job on their presentation. Whether or not I agree with it or not, I, I would like to say, as somebody who is very knowledgeable about history and also has a large portion of Taino Indian heritage, I do believe that it's very hard to judge history looking through the lens we have now. And from my perspective, if we try to change all our history, even though we may abhor what they did, we are doomed to repeat the same mistakes. That's my only comment, thank you.
Good. Any other members online have a comment? Okay, so I, I think I, you know, first of all, thank you guys so much for coming here and presenting. I really appreciate the time and energy and effort that you put in and also your courage to come here and stand in front of everybody and deliver that presentation. You know, from the one singular board member's perspective on this, I think I do, I am very sensitive to the Native American plight. And I, in a business format, I end up working with Native American tribes pretty regularly. And it's very interesting to work and get things from their perspective. It's very different than, than I think what most people would think. I think the one thing to echo Carrie's statement is that as you look back on history, I do think it is, it is, it is complicated to make judgments when you fast forward understanding the results of decisions and efforts that are made. I think one of the things, I took some time to read about this a little bit because I appreciated the fact that you guys put some time and research and energy into it and I wanted to be able to be here and be informed and make decisions. I think one of the things that I, that stuck out to me was that, well, there's no doubt that the results of some of the cross-Atlantic trips were very detrimental to indigenous populations, primarily through disease, but also through some elements of enslavement and war and lots of other unfortunate circumstances. I think those were results not necessarily intense. Probably could argue that. But I think the, one of the things that I think, being sensitive to Italian-Americans and, you know, Catholic-Americans' perspective on this and just Americans in general, is that we also have to think about, you know, who was a guy like Columbus who took it upon himself and his team to venture out into the middle of an ocean that, you know, very few, if, if, if Nanny had really been willing to make that trip and, and, and be courageous from that perspective. And it makes me think of people like our astronauts today. And I'm not sure if it's a 100% great comparison or not, but who knows what an astronaut might do if they landed on Mars and all of a sudden we found out there was an indigenous population and by some circumstance, we passed off COVID completely unintentionally. But again, it's just, we're judging things from, from, from the rearview mirror rather than necessarily, you know, looking for. So I think those are kind of my thoughts. I think it's, I think there's definitely some benefits to what you're saying, but I also think there's some, some pitfalls to read, to re-judging history in the rearview mirror. So with that being said, are there any motions on this that we need to entertain?
I'll make a motion that we make the change.
Okay. Any seconds for that? Hearing no second, we will not entertain that motion. Any other motions? I'll make a motion. I motion that we split the baby. I would motion that even though you have a list of a number of schools up there that identify schools that have made that change to Indigenous Peoples' Day, there are many schools that have also decided to label that on their calendars as Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day. I think there's some merit to that in that it recognizes both the spirit of, of entrepreneurship and adventure and, and being brave enough to go out and try and prove things, but also is sensitive to the fact that there are some ramifications to that and, and some unfortunate results that, that were also visited upon the indigenous people. So that being the case, my motion is that we change the name on the calendar to Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day. Is there a second for that motion? Somebody online?
Sure.
Okay, Eric seconds that motion. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll go through a roll call vote. Lori? Don't think she's on. Mike?
Yes.
Dr. Benson Clark? Okay, hearing nothing. Mary?
Yes.
No.
I, Mike, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with my computer. I'll abstain.
Okay. Jessica? I don't think she's personal. Carrie?
No.
No, okay. Gabe? Eric?
Yes.
Sue?
No.
Okay. And I will vote yes. That vote does not carry. All right. Any other motions on this subject? Thank you very much for your time, everybody. Really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Thank you, guys.
All right, that being the case, I think we agreed earlier to skip to.
Yes, so this, this would be the discussion and possible action on the administration of the race survey. This is a agenda item that comes to the board every two years. This is a kind of part of our partnership with AHM. And AHM is the recipient of many grants. And one of the grants that does, provides significant support for both AHM and RAM requires the administration of this survey. And quite frankly, the information gathered from the survey has been incredibly useful for us. And AHM has used it to spearhead a number of initiatives. And we're fortunate to have Tressa Giordano with us this evening, the executive director of AHM. So what, the reason why we're bringing it to the RAM board this evening is that the RAM board needs to approve any surveys from outside the district that we're administering. So we will need a motion and an approval to move forward with this. But Tressa can give us more detail on the significance of the survey and some of the background to it. So Tressa, thank you for joining us this evening.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, guys, for the invitation. For board members that might be new, my name is Tressa Giordano. I started with AHM in July of 2019, kind of right before COVID. So things have been an interesting path for sure, but I'm, I'm so fortunate to be working with RAM. And I feel that especially during these years of COVID, our, our collaboration and our relationship has definitely strengthened. And I know on behalf of my staff, we're all just really honored to be able to service and be there for, for the families of RAM. So as Scott mess, mentioned, we do have the Drug-Free Communities Grant. And with that 10-year grant, it's a requirement for every two years for us to do a survey. We use an evaluator, her name is Bonnie Wegland-Smith. We've used her for years and she's been wonderful in helping us to create the survey, to take in all of the data. And then after the data is computed, she will actually come back to this board as well as our coalition to, to kind of break down the data points. We, we did, we were supposed to do this survey in the spring of 2019, but because of COVID, we held off until the fall of 2020. And we had a pretty good turnout of student responses despite being kind of in that hybrid school mode. We're, we're decided to run it in the spring to kind of get us back on the schedule that we were on originally, but also because we want to follow students that we questioned back in the fall of 2020, especially around some COVID and toxic stress questions that we had asked your current students two years ago. So we're hoping that, you know, with board approval, you know, we'll, we'll run these surveys. We've talked to administrators and it looks like the end of May, beginning of June, works with their schedule. These surveys, which are done, you know, through a link that I sent to the students, can be done in advisory. And so we work with administrators to find good times to have the students complete the survey, which can take more than 15 minutes. There's an instructional video that we put together some years back that the teachers can show so the students know exactly how to, to take the survey. So, you know, we do find over the years, a lot of helpful information around substance use, sexual behaviors, we ask around the high school-aged students, not the middle school. As I mentioned, we did in the last survey, ask questions around COVID and how COVID has impacted mental health. We do ask questions around risk of suicide and thoughts of self-harm and also bullying and toxic stress. So we're really interested to get this information. And from there, once we have the data, we work together with administrators as well as our check coalition to kind of put a strategic plan together on how we are going to hopefully improve, you know, some of those issues that our middle and high school students be facing. And so over the years, and especially since I've started, I feel that, you know, AHM has taken this information and worked with not only administrators but teachers and really helping understand our students and understand how we can better help them. So, so yeah, we are just hoping that tonight, you know, the board will approve putting the survey out to the students in late spring.
Okay.
Good question.
Yeah.
I just wanted to capture, how often is the survey performed?
It's every two years.
Thank you.
Are there any new questions on, on this survey? Or are there repeats of questions we had?
They're pretty much repeats. There, there were some kind of crossovers with some of our COVID questions and toxic stress questions. So we worked with our evaluator to kind of, kind of mainstream and just make sure that we don't have any repeating questions. The COVID questions obviously were new two years ago. Those weren't questions that we were asking prior. But we thought that it's important to repeat those questions in hopes that the impacts that the students were feeling with COVID, you know, back in 2020 have hopefully, you know, better results this time around.
And responses are anonymous?
Correct, they're all anonymous, yep.
And you've, you've got that locked down?
We have that locked down, yep. And, you know, all.
You're 100% confident.
Correct, yep. Parents will receive, you know, information. We, we, you know, our evaluator provides kind of templates that the administrators will send out to parents. And so, you know, parents can ask that their students not participate if that's something that they prefer. I will say that traditionally, you know, RAM through the years has had a very high percentage of participation. And so that, you know, obviously helps AHM and, you know, RAM get good information to, to move solutions forward. I just want to mention that, you know, based on these surveys, much of what AHM does with the RAM community is impacted by, you know, these surveys. You know, many of you know that AHM serves as, you know, our local youth service bureau. But by getting this information, we are able to work with RAM in programs such as Peer Helpers, our Power of Words program has, you know, historically been, been a wonderful experience that our RAM students go through. Our PD trainings that we've been working with administrators on the past few years have been a direct result of some of, you know, the findings of this data. We've been really working with staff in the past two years around how we can help students who've been impacted by COVID, how we can help our educators kind of combat some of the challenges that they're seeing in classrooms as a direct impact of COVID. Due to some of the data that we found in the last survey around self-harm and thoughts of suicide, we were able to come in and work with Scott and the administrators in making sure that all RAM staff, including Perez and, you know, coaching staff have training in QPR, which is a suicide prevention training. You know, so again, a lot of this data, smart recovery, education around vaping, all of this comes together and helping our collaboration with RAM.
Dr. Benson Clark, I think you have a question?
No, I just, I just want to share, good evening, everyone, that I've found this survey to be invaluable. I think Amy was on the line, Amy DiMatio and Sue and some of us who have seen it for a long time. When I first was on the board years ago, it was the first time, for whatever reason. it was the first time, for whatever reason, that that idea of bullied-through-exclusion really, um, resonated with me. And I did a lot of research and Bonnie and A H M was very, very helpful. And I think not only is it great how you report back to us at work with our administration, our teachers, everyone, Tressa, but also then if families want to have their own conversations, not any kind of judging thing, but just, just a conversation they can.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Any other board members, questions or comments? Okay, that being the case, is there a, uh, motion to, um, uh, to authorize the administration of the E-Race survey?
I make the motion that we administer the E-Race survey.
I'll second that. Sue Stolfe.
Okay. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll go to a roll vote. Uh, Lori? Mike?
Yes.
Dr. Ben Stilgar?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jessica? Carrie?
Yes.
Gabe?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That motion carries.
Great. Thank you so much, Tressa. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, everybody. So, yeah, once we, um, we get the results, we'll be back for, you know, kind of a presentation, which will most likely be, um, early in the next school year. So, thank you, thank you, everybody, so much for asking me to come on tonight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that brings us back to 10.2, the overview of the Smart Pass application.
Correct. We, um, I'm sure you all are at least aware of, of Smart Pass. It, um, to, to maybe tell a, a little history. Ram was founded in 1957. And, um, we had a, a book that was donated to the school. It was a signed copy of, a poetry book signed by Robert Frost. You'd think that it would be worth something, right? Frost being poet, at least most everybody knows. Unfortunately, um, and I, I, I'm not naming names, but a librarian back in the late 50s had it rebound in school binding. So, essentially, any value the book might have had kind of disappeared. But there was a note in the book, um, asking that it be, um, donated to a, a teacher upon their retirement. Um, and the note was from 1959. And the note was written on one of these yellow utility passes, which we still use to this day. The utility pass that has remained unchanged for 64 years. And I only know that because I was born in 57 when this school opened up. So, to share the same age. It's not to say that, you know, don't fix it if it ain't broke. But, um, over the years, we've had a number of concerns with the traditional way of using paper passes. And in particular, when we're looking at, um, an emergency situation, whether it be a lockdown or a, um, an evacuation from the building, a, a pass doesn't necessarily provide you with the information that you might need to have regarding the location of a student or, or a better way of knowing where students might be if they left a, a classroom for a reason. So, we were, um, exploring some alternatives and decided to, um, to try the, the Smart Pass. And as I think many of you saw, there was a number of concerns from families. So, we have put it, put the pilot on hold and, and thought, really, we should kind of go back to the drawing board and begin with a presentation to the board so that we could better help understand what Smart Pass is and why the, uh, traditional paper pass. And, and, and it's generated enough concern that I think we'll, we'll keep it on pause, at least at the main meeting, so that we can come back and, and answer any questions, make sure that, um, you know, any information that people may want, we can, we can provide. So, um, we're fortunate enough to have Eric, who not only is facilitating our meeting tonight, but is going to be presenting, um, Smart Pass. We also have Dr. Briscoe and Dr. Susie, who are, um, here from each the high school and the middle school. We can, um, help support Eric and answer any questions that he might have.
It's different standing on this side of the screen. So, we're gonna just go over Smart Pass. I'll give some information on how it works, how it operates, what it is, some of the security features, and then I'll go into a quick demonstration of it, um, on my computer. You know, stand behind my computer instead. Yeah. So, what is Smart Pass? So, Smart Pass is essentially a digital hall pass system that literally mimics our... in, in a digital form. It provides more benefit than a traditional hall pass system, such as timer on the passes, emergency reporting, and other features. And we'll get into some of those. So, we're using, uh, we started to use the system before the pilots put it on hold, just in the middle school. The middle school is a much more controlled environment just because of the, the nature of the classes and how it's just no... there's cafeteria in the middle with study halls and stuff like that. So, it was a good, um, place to kind of see its effectiveness and roll it out before rolling it out, um, district-wide. Smart Pass was created approximately three years ago, coincidentally by a group of high school students, who wanted to help their teachers better manage the hall pass system at their school. It is now used by over 200,000 students and staff across the world. For the past year. So, as Mr. Leslie said, we have been using the same pass system since 1957. And we chose Smart Pass not only just to digitize something, because again, not if it works, not to not fix it, but, um, this will give us many benefits, such as the increase of safety and supervision of the students. We know where the students are in the building during an emergency. And I, we're not GPS tracking that much, I'll show you. But, um, it will help us better manage that. Just the instant data recording is much better. If we were gonna deal with our traditional paper pass system, it would take quite a while to, to cross-reference everything. It's also gonna help us limit vandalism and unsafe behavior in the bathrooms. It will decrease the amount of class time. And if I can quote a student when we piloted it, they said, wow, I didn't realize I was at a class. You know, just after a while of moving in. And it's definitely much more efficient and, uh, much more informative process than a paper system. So, how does the Smart Pass system work? It works in a couple different ways, and it can be, um... Let's see, it could be worked in really two or three different ways. So, students or staff can create the digital pass for the students. We have put in every classroom, bathroom, water fountain, the guidance office, media center, the main office, any place that a student wouldn't be able to go with a traditional pass, was added into the Smart Pass system. Students can either create a pass, which has been approved by the teacher, or the teacher can approve a pass for the student to go. Passing times for certain destinations have been predetermined. So, for example, um, to go to the water fountain should take approximately three minutes or so. So, we set the water fountain for three minutes. The bathroom is five minutes. Now, if the student needs additional time, we can always analyze that time and see, boys, do we have a lot of students who might need more than five minutes, and we can increase that time at the backend. And just like a traditional hall, hall pass system, if they're about, if they run six or seven minutes in the bathroom, you're not gonna, uh, count them for that. You can, um, work with the students and see, um, that that's okay. Most destinations are one-way passes, just because, for example, if they're going to the guidance office, we don't know how long they might need to be in guidance for. So, we didn't want to set a time limit for that. So, guidance, the main office, the media center, those are all one-way passes. So, they'll get a pass just to go there. So, three-minute pass time, just like their classes would be. The bathroom, the water fountains, those are two-way passes, because no one's in the bathroom assigning a pass for them to come back to the classroom. So, bathrooms and water fountains are two-way passes, while everything else in the building is a one-way pass. So, once they got to, for example, the media center, maybe they had to print a piece of paper, then they'll, whoever is the, um, staff at the media center could write a pass to go back to their classroom. And like I said, if students use more than their allotted pass time, the pass, um, will start to count upwards, and teachers will know how long the student was out of the room for. So, again, if they're only 10 or 15 seconds over, no one's gonna get in trouble for 10 or 15 seconds. But if it becomes an issue that maybe we're in the hall for maybe 10 minutes, and that's a consecutive issue that we see using the system, then they need that one to talk. So, how does it compare to our current paper pass systems? Like I said earlier, it literally is just an extension of that. So, currently, students will sign out on a piece of paper in their classroom. They put the destination, the time in, their name and, well, their name, the destination, the time that they left. And when they come back, they will put the time that they returned. Smart Pass literally works the same way, but it just keeps the record digital. So, it's no different than if we took the spreadsheet that they literally write in and just typed it up. So, spreadsheet had it that way. It just also has this nice, very nice interface on the backend that's easy to read and everything as well. And because of the way, um, digitized, a lot of it analyzed, all that data streamed quickly. So, for example, if there is an evacuation, what you'll see, we can pull everybody who's in the hallway at that second and know that in a matter of literally seconds. Whereas if you had to the paper pass system, it would take, uh, quite a lot, quite a bit longer to do that. So, I did a kind of comparison side by side. So, the Smart Pass system, the paper pass, and the student time in and the time out. We can use their to-and-from destination. On a paper pass system, you can cross-reference multiple sign-in or sign-out sheets. So, for example, if we needed to see where multiple students were, we'd have to pull the sheet to each classroom and analyze each one. On Smart Pass, it does it for you automatically. So, there's just no manual, um, analyzation. It does it for you on the, on the computer, essentially. In addition, the Smart Pass system is beneficial just because students, again, know how long they've been out of the room for. We know exactly immediately how long, who is out of the room during lockdowns, evacuations, other emergencies. And there's no waste of paper. So, how does this help with safety? So, Smart Pass allows us to access data that can be used for safety reasons. But for example, if there is an evacuation or a lockdown at the school, administration is able to instantly have a report of any active student, uh, who is outside of that classroom and where they're headed. Again, there's no GPS monitoring, so we don't know where they are in the building. But if I know they're headed towards this room, then I know where they are. So, if there is a real fire or something like that, you know who to send, you know where to send emergency personnel. Again, like I just said, you can send it to emergency responders. And that's critical, because it allows you to do that instantaneously. So, how does it help with curbing vandalism? Again, because of the time limits on the passes, that's kind of really uses to curb the vandalism. Students are more aware of how long they're actually in and out of the classroom for. And again, the goal is to keep students in the classroom. So, that would be good. They went to the bathroom, for examples. They'd be wandering around this way, they come directly back to their classroom, because the, the pass has a timer on it. And the Smart Pass uses GPS? It absolutely does not use GPS. That would be an invasion of privacy and against... And that would not be good. So, uh, Smart Pass only keeps track of which destinations in the school the students are headed to and how long they are out for. Again, the same thing that we would do with the paper pass system, just in a digital form. So, a student or a staff member can create a pass. Once a student returns, they stop the pass. The teacher can stop the pass. No tracking information is ever collected, because no tracking information is ever reported. And students don't carry, in the middle school, at least, students don't have their phones on them. They're not carrying the promos to the bathroom. So, there is no way to actually track them. And it's not, doesn't even exist in this program. So, the tool is simply just a digital record of analogs for real. So, how does Smart Pass handle student data? And can they sell the data they collect? So, back in 2018, the state of Connecticut passed Public Act 1689. It was talked about in 2016, and then it was officially put into, into service in 2018. And it prohibits student data to be sold, um, among other safeguards, such as how, um, our contractors have to store the data and stuff like that. So, what that law actually says is for any piece of, to actually, any contractor, anybody who is outside of our districts, who we do, who we do not employ, who wants to collect any information on students, they have to sign our data, our data privacy addendum. And we've worked really hard over the past, uh, four or five years to kind of get that in place. And I'd say currently, we have, um, over 150 different applications, with different privacy addendums registered with different contractors. And that's actually one of the most that I can ever find in this surrounding area. So, we have a lot of, um, contractors we've worked with to do this. And our privacy addendum is actually a little bit stricter than what the state requires in terms of reports. There's, for example, there's a data breach. They have to notify us within 48 hours. So, there's different things, um, that are actually stricter than what the state requires. And again, when we consider any of our tools, that's the first thing. So, if any teacher or any staff member comes to me, I kind of help them with the data privacy contracts. The first thing I look at is data privacy, and I look at the privacy policy. I look at any other districts in Connecticut have signed that, um, state legislation with them. And, um, then I reach out to them and see if they're willing to sign our data privacy policy. No one's allowed to even enter a student name into a system without that being signed. So, it's extremely strict. And if you actually look at any of the privacy policies that we have, they're all public online. And it goes into, um, detail that once a, once your contract, once your, once we don't need them to collect student data anymore, they have to destroy it. So, for example, since we're using Smart Pass in the middle school, if we did not implement that in the high school, after the student moves from eighth grade to ninth grade, Smart Pass would have to destroy any of that data, um, that is saved with Smart Pass. If they, we ended up using it at the high school as well, that data would be, be destroyed after they graduate from high school, and it would be no longer exist. And in the actual presentation, it has a link to, um, the privacy addendum with Smart Pass and our data privacy page. So, I'll do a demonstration. So, what I have here, um, is I have the administrator's side of Smart Pass, and I'll get into the teacher's side, and I'll actually issue a pass to, um, a demo student. So, it's not actually a real student. So, on the administrator's side, you can see that we're, um, demoing with it earlier. There is no data today, because again, it's, it's been inactive. So, um, there have been no hall passes, no students have been reported. But this is basically the area in which an administrator can see all real-time data that updates as passes are being issued. So, this is the current number of active passes, the number of reported students. So, for example, if a student was found wandering in the hall or something like that, that would be sent there. The average pass time, um, which, again, that's not necessarily, um... It would kind of tell you maybe where students are going and where they're headed. It has the pass usage, um, which was my demo pass earlier. And then the most frequent-used destinations, which is interesting as well. So, yeah, that kind of helps curb vandalism, because all of a sudden, you can see where are these most frequently-used destinations. Or maybe you can see where a student is just headed, maybe what might need more, um, support. So, that's kind of like the administrator's side. There's also this hall pass side. So, any, um, any active passes would go here, and they would have the student's, um, picture there. So, you can see it syncs with our Power School system, where they're headed and how much time is left on that pass. Once that pass is expired, it goes into kind of like a, like an archive. Over here, you can see all the rooms that we've added. So, for the middle school specifically, we have the main office, the different bathrooms, the water fountains, guidance, the nurse's office library, the different teams, cafeteria, ISS, and the team room. So, um, and then it has just like all our accounts and everything in there. On the teacher's side, which I'll show you, which will be my account, when a teacher logs into the system, this is what they're gonna see. So, they have three tabs at the top. They can, um, on their home tab, they can either create a pass for now or the future, which is beneficial, especially in the middle school, for that, um, eighth period, when maybe a student needs to go visit a teacher to make up, make up a quiz or something like that. They can schedule a pass in the future. And the student can actually schedule the pass and say, hey, is this a good time to make up the quiz? I'm gonna schedule a pass. The teacher will get a notification. They can either accept that pass or deny the pass, but maybe they need more time for the quiz, or maybe that's not a good time. Or they can say, yeah, you can come make up the quiz during that time. And then they accept the pass, and that will go into the student's, um, future passes that they'll use. We can also use that for, which I've, um, Smart Pass, I've talked to them, and they're actually very, uh, very good about adding features. And they're talking about adding reoccurring passes and stuff like that. So, if a student maybe needs to go, um, to guidance or something...
um to guidance or something, they can have that as a reoccurring pass. There's also, again, like I said before, the hall monitor tab that has all the active passes, but obviously right now there are none. And then um it has their room right now, which um my room in the middle school would be the chorus room and the keyboard room. So that would be my room. That's specific to my um, my account. So if I wanted to create a pass for a student, I'm gonna go click now. And then I'm gonna search for a student. So my demo student is um Rami dot RAM. So I'm gonna type Rami and that's their account. And now I've selected the student that I'm gonna write the pass for. On the student's side, they wouldn't have to obviously find themselves because it syncs with their account. So they would just skip that and say where they need to go for their destination. So I'm gonna click next. Um, right now, all the teachers have their rooms favored in, in there. So for example, I said my room is the chorus room and the keyboard room. So if I want to send them, um, this is from where they're going. So if I have them, for example, in my seventh grade general music class, I'm going to send them from the chorus room. So I'm gonna click that. And then say maybe they need to go to the main office. So I'm gonna click the main office. And now again, I can adjust the time for the student. If the student's creating the pass, they can also adjust the time. So this is a one-way pass. I'm gonna say the student can have the full three minutes to get there. And then I'm gonna send this pass to that student. And you'll see that that's an active pass now and it's counting down from the three-minute mark because that's how much we gave them. On the hall monitor side, you'll see that that's an active pass. Okay, so that has now gone to the active pass sign. And then if I jump back to the administrator's side, you'll see that that's an active pass right now as well. So again, that's all real-time data that's happening that we can get. So if there was an evac, if there was an evacuation, I could just jump in here, see the number of active passes and see where those students are headed. So that's the real-time data that we're getting. Whereas if we did it with the paper pass system, you wouldn't know. You would know hours later. Um, I also have the student account open right now. So right now, this is what the pass would look like on their Chromebook. And it, you'll see that they have two minutes and twelve seconds left. They're going to the chorus room or they're going from the chorus room to the main office. So I'm actually gonna enlarge that pass. You can see that I haven't, they can also see that they haven't used any passes today, this week or this month. So it will remind them and see how many passes they used. There's no limit to how many they can have. It just kind of helps them. And say they get to the main office on time and it only took them a minute and ten seconds or so, they can click and pass. And now that pass goes into their expired um passes, which they can remove. So it's not kind of going into there. Doesn't take too much room on their screen. And they can also, on the student's side, make a future pass as well. Um, that's pretty much it. It's a, again, just an extension of kind of what we use now. Okay, any questions?
Open up to the board for questions.
So the student would need to carry their Chromebook with them.
Good question. So when considering a digital pass system, um, we want to sign that was not, that was gonna be equitable for everyone. We understand that not every, especially in the middle school, students aren't allowed to have their phones out. We don't really want students carrying their Chromebooks into the bathroom or anything like that. So we want something that would work for everything. So in here, you don't need, they don't need to carry any devices. It just goes into like this database essentially. Um, just same thing if they were writing it down. But because there's a hall monitor feature, the, the different hall monitors at the middle school or the staff members can pull that up on their device or on a tablet. If um we give them tablets or something like that, and they can see all the current active passes that are active. Same way a normal paper pass would work. So if you're walking by me and I assign you a pass and then I question where you're going, I can see where you're going on here. And then you just don't have to show me a physical paper one.
So how, how does it uh? How do you end it? You've got so much time. So, so you know that someone isn't out there just to death.
Yeah, good. So I see what you mean because if they don't have a device, how would they end the pass? So like if they're going to the main office, for example, um, anybody, any staff member in the main office can log in and they can end there at the student's pass. Um, same thing if they're going to the media center. If it's the bathroom or the water fountain, those are two-way passes. So the student can actually start the pass on their computer, on their Chromebook. When they get back to the room, they can then end the pass on their own.
With that said, they don't carry anything, so they have to rely on a watch to know their time?
Um, no, I, I, that's a good question. So I think um, in terms of their time, they should, if they're not carrying a watch, they could um, if they find.
Well, well, most students don't carry watches or don't have watches or time. Five minutes is a set time we've given all passes. Paper, digital, doesn't matter. We trust that kids will go to the bathroom and come back. Something, something impedes them or something a teacher may ask them a question when they get back. So I guess the answer is they don't have to keep a watch. It's not, it's not clock critical, so to speak.
Well, what are the repercussions if they go a minute past their time?
Um, so typically, even now, our staff, if a student is taking too long, let's say they go to the bathroom or go to water fountain, when they come back, though they may have seen that they run over time, even with the paper pass that they've assigned out to the classroom, after a minute or two of it, the teacher may just walk over and say, everything okay. It's, it's, it's nothing, it's not changing what we do in terms of a paper versus digital. It's just a digital assigned pass.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mike.
Is there an administration main area? You might have already talked about this, but in the case of is it up to each of the individual teachers to, to find out exactly and report in where their students are located or where, who's got passes or is there an administrator?
Yeah, um, yeah. So this would be the administrative portal and it shows the um number of active passes. And if that was active, you can see where those students are headed. The administrator or, or any staff member could actually click on the hall monitor view and see there's a student's access. So for example, if there is an evacuation, they happen to have that tab open, the hall pass tab, smart pass tab. They could see, oh, maybe the student is coming by my room and maybe I should just check on them and bring them outside for the evacuation. So both, there is kind of both that administrator view here and then the, the hall monitor view as well.
One other follow-up. In the case where the, where the student comes back to the classroom, you forget to cancel the pass. Time accumulates. Is that student going to accumulate uh time on pass that they're then going to be spoken to about? How do we control that? I think that would be a concern that some parents would keep.
So it was interesting because on the, on the one day that we did kind of attempt to enroll it out, um, um, I was looking, actually, at, at the end of the day, I was looking and there was um a hundred and fifty-eight passes active, which I thought was amazing. That there was that many. So that just kind of goes to show. But I think as well, there were a few that kind of were rolling up in time. And I was looking at them and I was like, huh, there was a rolling up in time and they haven't, and they haven't stopped them yet. And I, I think what happened was just um the student or the um staffer just forgot to end that pass. And I think that would go obviously into the archive section. Um, and if we're looking at that constantly and we see that that's fifteen minutes, then maybe you would pull the student aside and talk to them. But if it's a kind of a one out of the blue um circumstance where it was fifteen, I think we would just kind of see that maybe they just forgot to end the pass. And just kind of assume that. But if, again, if it happened multiple times and if that data would kind of show something differently.
Yeah, the data will teach you how, how to handle.
Uh, somebody online with questions? One of the board members?
Hi.
Who is it? Eric?
Here.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Carrie.
So if it's basically the same thing you're doing and the children don't have to carry a phone with them or anything like that, obviously, it's not, um, we know the GPS isn't there. My question is, from a history and a record-keeping perspective, is there a log currently with the paper system that is kept in the office in, as a history of who had passes when? Or do they just get tossed in the trash?
So, so teachers, each teacher has a sign-out, sign-in sheet to keep track of who, to log the passes that are used there today. And if something does happen and we, we need to find a student or we suspect something, we have to go to each log to look it up. Um, one year, we did create a spreadsheet for one team based on the fact that there were some issues happening within one of the bathrooms. And we tried to keep track of who went in and went out. It is very time-laborious to do, to enter, to type in each name into a spreadsheet. But we did track that way. We can't track that way. This really does just simplify that process.
Right. I guess I was asking, are the paper, are the paper logs kept or are they discarded?
At the end of the year, we throw them out.
Oh, you keep them all year? Okay. That's all I, thank you.
And same thing with this system is we could, we could destroy them after, whenever we, we want to. Smart Pass has to keep them, smart pass can keep them until the student, but we can destroy them at any point. Because we own, we, as I talked about that data privacy before, in that data privacy addendum, it states that we own any piece of data in there. The contractor does not own that. So we have complete control over how um we can delete it at any point. So if we want to delete it quarterly, we could. If we want to delete it yearly, we couldn't.
Okay, because what I'm gathering from some of the things I've seen and the concerns from parents is the surveillance factor. And um, that's why I was asking that question. So thank you.
Who else? Eric?
See any others online?
So go ahead, Joe.
Um, so you mentioned that it um, you can keep track of how many times students use the restrooms. Can you, is there a way that it can tell these three students from three different classrooms? Say they all use the restroom at one fifteen every afternoon. Is there a way that it can track that?
It can't. If, if, we can put in um sorted by room. So if there's like a bathroom that's being used, like say um, say the green team bathroom in the middle school, we can pick a time and run the report of who's in that bathroom at that time. But you um, you can't like choose students and see where they, like click three students and see where they've been. You'd have to run it by the room and see who's in the room.
Okay, I'm just coming from the, the perspective that if there's a vaping issue potentially going on, if we can, I don't, I hate the word track, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Identify three students or however many students consistently meeting at the same place at the same time every day.
Yeah, you can kind of get that from both, from a different data point. So there was that most frequently used room. Okay. Section. So that would kind of increase. So you can kind of look into those insights. And then you could also look into, um, you can, if you know that maybe this bathroom is a vaping issue, you can pull, you can pull it from either a certain time, like between one and one fifteen, or you can pull it from the entire school day or any time in between. It'll run a report of who's been in that bathroom, uh, or guest times.
All right, cool. Sorry, did somebody else chime in online? Any other board members with questions? No? Any other board members, questions?
I can just hold, Mike, on you asked about the evacuation and like the passes. Just to give you a sense of how that happens now and how different this is. So when we evacuate the building right now, every classroom has a direction they go and they leave the room. And they have a stairway or an exit door that they leave. And then they have a gathering area where they go to. So because we're using a paper system, at that point, at no time during that point do we know, those of us who are, you know, ultimately responsible, well, we're all responsible for the safety of our kids, but those are immediately, you know, responsible for the safety of our kids, who may be out and about and not with their classroom. So the current method of doing that is that once the students have, and the classes have left the building, we have runners and they go to each of the classes and pick up a piece of paper that lists who's there and who's not there. And then they collect X number of pieces of paper, maybe from six classes. And then they have to run that to, for the high school, they run it to the flagpole. And we have a, our attendance secretary who is checking off that each of the teachers' attendance slips have been found. So you're talking a process just to collect those slips that might take half an hour. And then to actually get into the weeds to see who may or may not be with that class or who might have been out of classroom at that time, um, it'd probably take another few hours to do that. Whereas with the smart pass, you'd, the administrative page, you could simply open up and you'd know exactly who wasn't with their class if it wasn't accounted for on that attendance list. So you could very quickly determine who might be missing and who may not be missing, you know, for safety purposes. So there, it, it streamlines some of those things that we have a great deal of process in place for, but still is very cumbersome and takes a long time. And, you know, fortunately, I'm speaking for private growth. Um, we've been fortunate not to have an actual evacuation. And, you know, but something like this would be a dive for allowing us to very quickly know where everybody is so that we can make sure that everyone's evacuated from the building, nobody's left. Also, in a lockdown situation, it would allow us to um determine, you know, who may not be in the classroom but who might have been out in the hallway and therefore um found shelter in a bathroom or a room other than the classroom there.
Yeah, if I could make a comment, I, I, for a short time, very brief time, I worked as a substitute teacher at tree school. And uh, you were assigned to a different classroom every day. So it wasn't like you'd get who your kids were. It was a project even to take attendance. And many things I didn't like about that trip. One that made me stop doing it was I asked myself, if there was an emergency, the place was on fire, if there was a gun in the school, would I know where my kids were? And the answer was no. And so if an electronic system could help a little bit in that regard. Because the comings and goings, I mean, there's, there, there are kids removed from the classroom through special instruction. There are kids that come in late because of special instruction. There's kids going in and out for a variety of things. You don't know them personally. You don't recognize them by seeing. It, it, it could be a very, very difficult task to know, start, for starters, who your kids were and then would you know where they were? The answer was no. And that's, that was the biggest contributing factor for me saying this, this job.
I think, you know, I know some of the concerns coming from, from parents were the issue of tracking, you know, are we tracking kids? And, and we're not. We don't have any trackers on kids. As you can see, they don't have a device with them. So we're, we're not able to do that. But, but then the, the, on the flip side, it's our responsibility to know where every one of our kids is during every second of the day while they're here at school. You know, certainly when the school bell rings at two-ten, um, that's not the case anymore. But certainly during the school day, if a parent calls up at any moment in the day and asks, where's my kid? We better know exactly where that child is. Otherwise, regardless of whether they're a seventh grader or a senior, you know, two days from graduation, um, that parent expects us to know exactly where that child is. And this, again, it doesn't track them. So I can say, well, I'm looking at my phone and I can see that they're walking down X hallway. No, it doesn't do that. But it allows us, if we call into the classroom and the teacher says, well, they're not there, it allows us to look at the pass system and say, oh, well, they went on a pass two periods ago to guidance and they're with their counselor. So it expediates kind of something, you know, understanding where students might be.
Eric, is that somebody else online?
Um, it was a member from the public had a comment.
Okay. Um, so uh, I guess any other board member questions? Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Um, just another quick one, just an example. Um, so say I'm a student going from the classroom to the library and the school was into a lockdown and I run into, say, the guidance office. Is it because my teacher assigned me to the library, is only a librarian allowed to sign me back in? Or could the, could the, a guidance counselor accept my pass?
Yep, yep. Any, any staff member can approve.
Okay.
Yeah, any staff member can sign in or.
Okay.
End the pass.
Okay.
And I will say, on like a side note, I've been in contact with smart pass for other features that some of the teachers have um asked about. And I will say they're very receptive of um adding anything. And they even have like a roadmap of, yeah, we have this future plan. And it's, I'll say it is very aimed towards public schools. It's, it's, would have almost everything that we would, we would look for.
I have a couple of questions. So what's the, what does this system cost us?
Um, they gave us a deal for the, for the first year and a half. I want to say it's
So twelve hundred?
It was even less. I think it was eight hundred dollars for a year and a half.
And that's for the high school and the middle school?
Just the middle school.
No. That's for the middle school? What about the high school?
Um, the high school was gonna be a separate twelve hundred dollars. So about two thousand dollars for a year and a half.
One point five years. Okay, one question that I, I had, um, all right, I guess one item that I've seen raised from some uh parents sending me uh questions and concerns. What does a profile look for a student? Like, so if you're entering a student What does a profile look for a student? Like, so if you're entering a student into this system, what what is the student profile? What does that consist of?
Um, so it syncs with our Google for education account, so it just has their name, their email and their photo ID. That's the only, there's no other, no birth.
No age, no birthday, no nothing.
Just name, email and.
You say it syncs, is it, is it something that you're manually adding based on a list from your, like, are you sharing something over to it or is it?
So it comes from Google, so basically essentially if like a new student enrolls in the school, their account would be created. At midnight the day they get entered into Google, so it just keeps us. So basically, like, for example, if a student withdrew from RAM, like, say, a seventh grader withdrew, their data would be, once they unenroll and we remove them from Google. Their account gets removed from smart pass, so their data gets.
So to be clear then, there's no real separate profile, they are entered in, they they essentially get a profile in Google as part of a right being a RAM student. And that same set of three pieces of information is because it's a Google problem.
Yep.
You're saying.
Well, the smart pass isn't Google, but the the information is syncing over.
Okay.
But again, Google also has that privacy addendum with us as well.
So you talked about how you're or we plan to use it, uh, if if we move forward on it, what? Is there, are there functionality or elements um uh or modules that that are eligible within? The system, but you you're not using them.
So there is the um, there's an encounter prevention.
Which gets back to what Joe was asking about, right?
That is a separate module that we have turned off, but it's not really, it's part of the system, but it's um. Sounds like that you kind of like add on, but essentially that would be if there's, for example, two students who maybe shouldn't be in the bathroom at the same time, just because of any disciplinary reason. If one of those students has a pass, it won't allow the other student to be issued a pass until that other student returns. There is a override feature that's coming within the next few months, the smart pass. So like, for example. We wouldn't want like if a student needs to go to the nurse and we couldn't issue them a pass because um it wasn't allowing us, we would obviously want to override that so they can go to the nurse.
So you're not, that that's just, that is, you say you're not using that, that that's you as a, or whoever the administrator is for RAM. Not turning that system on, but it is available and part of our our, whatever our cost structure is.
Yeah, it comes with, it comes with the program, so you can't not pay for it, just add it into it, but yeah, we um opted not to turn it on, so it is completely turned off. And in order to turn it on, you would actually have to like make a student group and all that.
Okay, what what other, are there any other elements or modules that you're not using, but there are, but are currently available within that system?
No, those are the only, that's the only addition that smart pass offers currently.
Okay. Uh, okay. Uh, so I'll just throw out a couple, a couple of notes to Scott's point at the beginning of this discussion. Um, based on the concerns that were raised from the community. Uh, and the idea that the necessity to to communicate, you know, the system and have this presentation, field some questions. Talk about just postponing any implementation of this, any future implemented at a, at a minimum until the next school year. Um, one of the things that I did ask Scott to do was to inquire through um our legal counsel. If there's any um risk or concerns from that perspective that we need to be aware of. Uh, if I'm being honest, there are some parents that have raised the specter of potentially uh. Legal consequences if if we move forward with this. Um, and the last thing, so I want to make sure we're clear that we understand what those circumstances are from a board perspective, so we can make an informed decision. Um, and then I think the only other thing I would just say is that um. I think I, it was great to see that, but I think if there's any other board members that would want to actually maybe get in front of that and just. Kind of walk through, I couldn't really see it very well, so I think that's probably something that we could probably arrange if necessary.
Absolutely.
Uh, so that board members can also respond to constituents if they have questions after having had this presentation. Uh, Dr. Benson Clark, I think I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Um, so I have, I guess, one question with a follow up. Um, having worked with high school students and at some larger high schools. We have had, say, for instance, two high schools, schoolers where there's a safety plan. They are not supposed to cross paths for various reasons. So I guess my thought is this could be useful. How however, if we ever were going to do that or um have groups of students. I I think that I would, I don't know what's legal, but I think having. Telling parents, whether it's through a PPT or something is is advisable and maybe you could get. Um, how it's being used in the state and and what is legal for our next meeting.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Um, yeah. Are there any other questions at this time? Somebody else?
Yeah.
Who's that? Is that a board member or? Who was it?
Carrie.
I'm sorry, Carrie, go ahead.
No, just real quick comment, I'm just wondering, um, you know, I think this presentation was a bit enlightening me perhaps, um, and I. And I understand, you know, I have um a child going up next year, but. Maybe it's, is it feasible to do this presentation to ease the community? At some point?
Yep, absolutely. And I think we can also, we could, we could do a couple of it, we do a a a live presentation. But we could also do kind of a video. Walkthrough of this presentation so that it would be available at any time and and we could, you know, blast it out to everybody, so it would be easily accessible to everybody and. Yeah, but absolutely, and I think, Carrie, I think we wanted to to deliver to 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 you guys first and then. Um, look at how we can best get it out to to our families so that they can see it as well.
Well, thank you.
I think though, if there's no other other concerns or questions, I think the only other comment that I would make is that I would implore, you know, uh. The administration as a whole, and that includes a board, I I think that. I think we have to be sensitive to the fact that there are sensitivities around certain subjects. And I think, you know, in this day and age, there's a lot of sensitivity around data collection on people in general and certainly about our children. And I think what we probably need to do going forward is just recognize that sensitivity and maybe be. Uh, a little bit, while I don't want to stifle uh progress for new systems and new opportunities to do things differently and better. I think we also have to um be super proactive about the communication portion of that, um, that planning. And uh, and communicate those things well in advance and be a little bit more aggressive about how we include parents in that, uh, so that. We probably would, you know, maybe not have had quite as many questions and concerns if we were a little bit more aggressive as a group on that kind of thing. So just going forward, I think that's probably a best practice that I would advise, so. Any other concerns?
Yeah, go ahead. Actually, I have one more question. Are parents able? So my stepson's gonna be in seventh grade next year. Would I be able to, as a parent, view his hall passes? So I could see and question him, well, why are you going to the restroom during this certain class every day? Or is it something the teacher would have to tell the parent?
You, there's no current portal to export, like, just, um, well, that's a good feature, so I might actually recommend. So smart pass, but um, there's no portal, so you'd actually have to ask um their teacher. And I believe the teacher would, either them or the administrator would be able to run that reporting, get that.
Okay.
I think it's interesting because if from perspective of a parent, if I can see more of what it is that you're collecting and what's going on, then maybe I feel less concerned about it.
And there are other programs that that definitely do, like, we don't have any here that do that, but there are other technology programs that allow um parental access into them. That'll, you could see what students are searching and stuff.
The the uh, what's it, the, what's the online uh RAM power, the power school thing is, but if you use it, it's a parent's best friend. So. Uh, Carrie, is that you again?
Yes, sorry. Um, just real quick, uh, piggybacking on that. So not, you know, I know for a fact, like, my son, his grade, not everybody has phones. So is this gonna be on everybody's Chromebook where the parents can view it on their child's Chromebook?
Yeah, actually, yes, that's another good point is um. It's, it's just a web portal, so they, if the student came home with their Chromebook, the, they could log in and you could see all their past data on the Chrome. So that would work that way as well, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, uh, and or act, I'm sorry, go on, oh, you, uh, Dr. Benson Clark, go ahead.
I I have my hand up, I missed the first part. Um, what, did you say parents might be able to see how many times children used? Um, passes in school?
Um, so there's no current parent portal to have a parent login to see that, but they could um. If, when the student brings their Chromebook home, they could um sign in and they could see all their past um hall passes or. Um, a staff member should be able to see um that data and be able to to pull it.
So, I mean, this is just another thought. I mean, we're all different, we all have our different views on privacy and everything. I literally turned Power School off and I di- I didn't listen to it or watch it or use it. Because I decided that learning was the most important thing for my children. They were taking the highest level classes possible. And I saw a very good um parody done of Power School at one of the Cape conventions. And it's, it's just something to think about, you know, sometimes we teach children, if you're really stressed, take a break and adults do this too. Go get a drink or something. I mean, I I don't know, it scares me a little. Um, thank God, I don't have children in high school, but I would not want to know every time they went to the bathroom or or to get a drink. I appreciate others, others might, but I think sometimes there are unintended consequences. And maybe when we're looking at any legality, like I said, with students with safety plans, we could hear if there's any. Any research on on that.
Any other questions or comments or concerns on this topic from the board? Any motions that we need to entertain? Alright. Uh, I think we can move on to ten point three requests for overnight trips.
So um, this has been a missing piece of our agendas for the last couple of years, obviously. Since we, we have not been approving any overnight trips. Lily mentioned, and I mentioned a little bit, the trip to France, that was a trip that was planned in two thousand eighteen. Was supposed to run in two thousand twenty and was put off because of COVID. Students that graduated in the meantime, twenty and twenty-one, got full refunds. But now that we're back and the world is open again, um, you know, no more free refunds, and so obviously we had to run the trip. Um, but I'm, I'm pleased to um be at that point where we're once again. Um, we'd like to consider offering overnight trips. And the Board of Education, as a um matter of course, doesn't approve field trips, those are done at the building level. However, any overnight trip, the Board of Ed needs to approve. And uh, because we haven't done any of these on my tenure, I I I think it's typically part of the consent agenda. Um, but I wanted to put it into new business because we really are reopening the door. Back into the world for our students. So we have two requests for overnight trips. One is a trip tentatively scheduled for um April break in two thousand twenty-three. And this would be a trip to um to Spain. This is a longstanding sister school program that RAM has been engaged with where a. School from um Cordoba brings their students to RAM in the fall. And they uh, they're housed in families, RAM families, and they stay with us for a couple of, for a week or so. And then in April, the students who house the Spaniards are housed. Um, when they go to Madrid and Cordoba for those trips. So um Laura Vega-Belay has a request to um to reactivate the. Spain Sister School Program for two thousand twenty, um, it would be, the dates are tentatively. April tenth to April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, it would involve approximately twenty-four students. And they'd be traveling to primarily Madrid and Cordoba, Spain, um, with various other cities, day trips. The other um overnight field trip is a longstanding. Trip to Disney with our um sponsored by our music boosters. This is for the band and chorus, and this provides students with a firsthand experience at a professional performance venue. And they work with world-class conductors and arrangers. And this is involving um as many as a hundred students. And they would be flying down to Orlando. This would involve all of our performing ensembles, concert choir, chamber singers, encore, wind ensembles, sonic band, jazz band, percussion ensemble. I can speak from a personal note of how valuable this trip is, having two sons that played the triangle. In the Portland High School Band, um, but it was those two or three clinks of the triangle that got, that got them on the Disney trip. So it's all worth it for them. Uh, if anyone's wondering that no one majored in triangle and they don't play the triangle anymore, but. So they are um requesting March twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-three. And I would imagine these are the first of, we'll see some more requests for overnight trips. But these are, these are two um. Trips that have been run consistently over the years. Good trips to start. So I would need a motion to approve um the overnight field trips.
I'll just, I'll just throw that this out, my daughter went on the Spain trip twice, she's still in close contact, she stayed with the same family twice. Still to this day, she's twenty, gonna be twenty-four here, she's still in very close contact with that family, they still, she comes to visit here, my daughter goes to visit over there. Uh, it was an exceptional program and I would strongly recommend it. Um, any uh questions or comments?
Yeah, no, I just want to add a few comments. So number one, I also did in freshman year. I did not go on the trip to Spain, but I did host this uh exchange sheet as part of that program, and it was a blast. And it truly like, as somebody who's been involved with, you know, the Spanish for the past quite a few years now. Um, I feel like it's an opportunity that each kid who takes Spanish should like, should have. And I I know, obviously, with the past years, we haven't been able to do that, but I feel like now it would be a great opportunity for them to like explore more. Of, you know, their culture and stuff like that. And um, yeah, being able to have somebody um from Cordoba, Spain, in their home. Inter to interact with and like, you know, make a new friend, he speaks a new language is a great opportunity. And um regarding the Disney World thing, I think that as somebody who also is from a um, you know, I do, I'm in percussion ensemble. I think that's a uh, like, you know, a fantastic opportunity as well. And I think I speak for the majority of the RAM music department, and um, you know, everybody wanted to say it would be, it will be in. Uh, it would be a blast to go, be able to go and do that next year. So, yeah, just would add those in.
Who, who was just speaking, please?
That was Rowan, our student representative.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh, any other board members, comments or questions? Alright, that being the case, uh, is somebody um make a motion to uh approve the. Uh, world language department's travel to Spain uh. And the music department uh Disney trip uh overnight trips?
Yes.
Okay. Eric.
Second.
Oh, so was that Sue?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I feel like we can do a uh voice vote here, uh, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Alright, uh, let's move on to ten point four, discussion impossible action, uh, we already did on the race, sorry. Uh, ten point five, first reading of policies.
So these were presented to the policy subcommittee, we had three policies, um, we discussed. Um, update, making updates to the eligibility, particip- participation in co-curricular activities. Um, the school lunch charging policy and credit for online courses. Um, we'll take a look at the, and and the copies that that the board has. Um, the red strikeouts would remove current language and the blue underline. Would be the additional language for the eligibility for participation in co-curricular activities. Um, Dan Trudeau is here, our athletic director, and he can certainly um answer any questions and speak to this policy. This is a um, an update to. Our eligibility for participation in co-curricular activities, which currently requires that students. Achieve a average of C minus or better, which essentially equates to seventy average. Um, and have no Fs in order to be eligible, to be at the end of a um quarter. In order to be eligible for the participation in the next athletic season. Um, and obviously, the the policy. And obviously, the the policy is there to encourage students' interest in athletics to um to do. Focus at least adequately enough on their academics so that they um are successful in their classes if they'd like to participate in athletics. Dan has done a number of um, you know, taken a close look at this and found that um it 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 actually does. Prevent a number of students, some of our most needy students, from participating in athletics. And is proposing a modification to the policy. That would allow students, would still require the C minus average, but would allow students to um one F and still participate. In athletics. And Dan, do you want to expand on that a little bit in terms of um kind of your reasoning, since you work most closely with the the athletes?
Yeah, sure. I'm gonna back off here. Yeah, as uh Mr. Leslie alluded to, um it it seems that it's our more needy students. Um or there's a population of our more needy students who are student athletes, who were being affected by. Our no F policy and the athletic policy. You know, it was, I'd say there's, there's eleven or twelve each athletic season. Eleven or twelve high school students, student athletes, who fall into that ineligible category. You know, I went back and looked when I did this for second quarter, which established third quarter eligibility. Eight of the twelve students, um or eight of the twelve student athletes who fell into that ineligibility area. Happened to be students that um were either higher needs, um you know, one parent at home. A minority student, um just kind of fell into those categories of not our traditional students. And when I looked at that, um you know, obviously, I do want to support those those needier students. Without also sacrificing the integrity of what the other policy was meant to, um with what the current policy was meant to do, which is older gets higher standards. And in, you know, discussing with Mr. Leslie, discussing with Dr. Briskel. You know, I I I don't want to speak for them, but we discussed, I firmly believe that the vast majority. Of our student athletes are still going to, um you know, they're still gonna be strive to be high-performing students. So so I don't look at this as something that's necessarily lowering the standard for everyone, but I look at it as supporting. Those hiring students. Um and and I believe this is, uh must've got edited out, I don't think it did, but. Allowing those students one F, one stipulation to that was that that one F can be lower than fifty. So really, it wouldn't allow for a student who knows they're, they're going to fail their English class. To say, you know what the heck with it, I'm just gonna bomb this class for the rest of the quarter and focus on my other class and make sure I'm, to make sure I'm eligible. They're still gonna have to put a a concerted effort um into those, you know, into that force, um which they might just. You know, for various reasons, struggle to sort of grasp the knowledge. And 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 really, so that's that's the reasoning behind it. Um I think I hit on everything in there, but if anyone has any questions.
It it also should point out that this is still uh more stringent than the C I A C eligibility requirement. So we we still hold a more stringent, even if this change is approved, um our policy would still be more stringent than this.
And to to follow up on that, from kind of a a policy standpoint. Because the C I A C does say, you know, our eligibility standard is the golden standard. So um if we had a student who, let's say, went through a traumatic experience, um and they were all of a sudden ineligible. We, as a a school administration, have that ability to discuss that student as a, you know, as a, on a case-to-case basis and say, okay, we're gonna grant that eligibility. Because they were facing this circumstance. If they didn't meet the C I A C qualification, we would not have that ability. We would have to say, you know, no matter what the circumstances are, you're not allowed to participate because you don't meet the C I A C standard. So the reason I say that is from a sort of a policy standpoint and and you know, practical practice. You know, if if we make an exception for one student, um you know, for whatever the circumstance may be. You know, I I think we're kind of in a time and age where kids talk and, you know, everyone on their team is gonna know. So if there were two kids on the, the boys cross team that were ineligible and one got granted and the other didn't. You know, I think from a policy standpoint, we're also sort of looking into. You know, a potential nightmare. And then, to be honest, that really has nothing to do with why, you know, sort of drafted this proposal. It really was to to support these students with potential higher needs, but I think it was kind of an unintended circumstance that um ended up being discussed at the administrative class, so.
Any board questions or comments?
I believe I was present at a meeting some years ago, sitting over there, where um. Where a comment was made that. Athletics were a. Induce them for borderline students to do that. Because they knew that if they didn't achieve a certain academic level. They wouldn't be able to play. And so that person was advocating a a high standard, a high academic standard. So that that borderline student, which may not so much student school, but very interested in in athletics, would work harder. Improve their academics so that they could be eligible. So that's, that's sort of the opposite argument to what's being presented here. I guess personally, I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea that someone can be failing a course. Still playing.
I'd actually like to make a comment. I think uh I I have some um some bona fides in this, in that I coached high school wrestling for uh many, many years. Not at this high school, but at another one. And uh. Came across this circumstance multiple times. Um and I think while I'm sympathetic to what you're saying and the idea that we don't want to. Um we don't want to lower the bar necessarily or get rid of a um a uh forcing factor or a forcing function to to get kids to improve their academics. I would argue that there was also a significant number of kids where um to to uh to our Athletic Director's point is. Actively doing the very best they can under some challenging circumstances. And uh a lot of times, that challenging circumstance, um when it's uh when they're eliminated from competition in sport. Is almost like a cataclysmic second event that um does nothing to uh improve their attitude or their. Opportunity to to improve, and if anything, it's it's more detrimental. And I think the key that I, the key to this is that even though we set a policy, or we potentially set a policy here that says, here's kind of the minimum standard. Parents at any point can go to a coach and say, my kid can't play today. Or my kid can't, you know, that's a parental right. If they're concerned that they're not meeting their obligations as a student, as, you know, according to the standards of their own household. So um or, you know, for whatever reason, if there's behavioral concerns or whatever, for whatever reason, a parent might decide, you have that ability to communicate with the coaches. So I think, you know, the thing that I would add is that while, you know, nobody likes to hear about a student getting an F. I think I saw in my ten years as a high school coach, a significant number of circumstances where it's uh, it's not the predominance of the student athletes that are affected by this. But it's a handful, uh you said ten or twelve, I think, right? Ten or twelve. And I think this gives the administration the ability to make decisions about those ten or twelve. With some flexibility in the best interest of those ten or twelve students without having any really dramatic impact on the entire rest of the kind of student athlete population. But it gives us a lot more flexibility to be proactive and positive uh in making decisions about those twelve versus. Having a standard cutoff that sort of eliminates the ability to make an individual decision on that person. So that's my two, my two cents as a former wrestling coach. Anyone else? Yes. I'm sorry, go ahead. Dr. Benzen Clark?
Yeah, hi, um Chairman Morris. I could, I could not agree more. I um for over twenty years was in charge of um high school students in multiple high schools. Who would be the beginning of looking at, did they need a five oh four plan? Did they need um an assistance plan? Did they need a P P T or they just weren't doing well? And and almost to the one, I can say, having them get off with the football team or any of the teams, it was, it was a double negative. I could, I could never recommend that. In fact, I would recommend that we do, which I think we do do. Everything we possibly can to support um and help this student, as our Athletic Director said, to at least, at least get that fifty. Go for the fifty-five, the sixty, learn, learn at least some, some content. I think, I think it's, I think it's the humanitarian thing to do, the right thing to do. And I really believe that at the end of the day, the students will learn more because they're not, you know, turned off because of their sports. And their academics and just feel, feel hopeless. It gives them some pride and hope.
Any other comments or?
Um just reading this. It says, first quarter eligibility will be determined by the previous school year's fourth quarter grades, C minus average with no Fs. Should that say no more than one F?
The, the, the challenge there is that because you're looking at the end of the year. You don't, they don't have any way of making it up. So, you know, if you allow the F, they have no way of continuing to work on it. That's why that one looks a little different.
Okay. So if I got, so if. In the first quarter, if I got one F, say a fifty-five, I can play basketball. But in the fourth quarter, if I got a fifty-five, I couldn't play football in the fall?
Right, right. That's what our current policy is.
Yeah, but he's saying that the write, the write-up is not, doesn't reflect that.
Yeah. We, we had fooled around with it. I know that I think there was a version of this that had that. And um we were looking at summer school as being a possible um outcome to that.
I think. I I don't have it in front of me, but I I think um, I I think the language was a little confusing. But what we're actually trying to do is with that first quarter, is look at fourth quarter, but also look at the whole year. Um so that it alleviates the concern from some teachers, um and guidance counselors, that. A student who only plays football in the fall, you know, kind of says, uh it's fourth quarter, you know, I'm passing for the year. I can, I I can do what I want in the fourth quarter because I know I'm still gonna be eligible for football. So it takes into account both the fourth quarter and the the entire previous year's cumulative.
I think the only thing is that that's not what it says here. It says exactly what he said, so uh. The first quarter eligibility will be determined by the previous school year's fourth quarter grades, C minus average with no Fs. It doesn't say anything about that, so I'm. No, this, this is in blue, I think, right?
Yeah, that's the change. Dr. Briskel, can you chime in on that if you're, if you're there remotely?
Yeah.
Um because I know, I think there was some conversation with school counselors that. Modified some things too.
Yeah, this, this has um definitely been a conversation that we've had to clarify this. I think initially, um the understanding, it was misunderstood that it would be the, the full year grade. That they could, if they were failing, they could then take summer school and bring that grade back up to passing. And that's not what it really was. And so the counselors had an issue with that. That's not what this is. Um that's not what it should be saying. I believe it should, should probably say that, just as the other quarters, it's fourth quarter grades. It's not their full year grades that we're looking at. We've never looked at their full year grades, just fourth quarter. So it would, it should agree with the other quarters as well. Where if they have to have a C minus average and can only have one F, I think that probably is just um part of the confusion. And and my understanding is that we should change that to, to be in agreement with every other quarter. It shouldn't be different just because it's fourth quarter going into first, because it's not the final grade that we're looking at.
Gotcha. Okay, because I think the previous language had wording about summer school, which really definitely addressed fourth quarter, addresses the full year.
Yeah, where I got confused and I thought it was, it was originally, I had put something in there about the previous year. And basically saying if a student did fail a class for the year, um to regain their eligibility for the fall, they need to. You know, take a credit recovery over the summer, just for the sake of encouraging them to to stay. Um but I think we missed that.
Right, so right, okay.
So I don't.
We'll, we'll make that modification then and put it back. The board doesn't need to act tonight.
Okay.
Because this is just first reading. So this, this, these policies will show up under old business at the May meeting, at which point, well, they'll be up for approval.
Okay, okay.
We'll make that that change.
To catch you. Okay, so any, any other comments or questions about this particular policy? Hearing none, why don't we move on to the second policy?
For the school lunch charging, you'll notice is um. There are significant changes, and this is not due to um anything that we necessarily suggest. These are all um legal requirements based upon um the new laws, in particular, around. Preventing students from being shamed, um if they don't have enough money for lunch. And um I think if you look kind of at the bottom of that first page, under charging meals, the third paragraph, it's got three bullets there. Is, is kind of hits to the part of this in that the board prohibits publicly identifying or shaming a student or any unpaid, for any unpaid meal charges. Including but not limited to delaying or refusing to serve a meal to a student, designating a specific meal option for a student. Otherwise, taking any discipline action against the student. I can assure you that we don't do this now. So this isn't really going to necessitate us any change in, in how we work with our students. But it does codify um and supports the law in ensuring that we don't do it now and we don't do it in the future. Even, do you want to add anything to this? Because I know that.
So no, basically, I think everything, there was a law that was recently passed in, in the legislative body. That um basically prevents school systems from shaming students for um not paying their meals. Unfortunately, at some point, the family does need to pay up because of outstanding student obligations. They wouldn't get a diploma behind the reading, so, and then the federal law states that at the end of the fiscal year. The debt cannot be in the school lunch fund. It needs to be paid off. So currently, we use student activity funds to pay off students' debts, and that rolls forward. And during the year, attempts are made to reach out to parents and families and explain the situation. If after a certain number of meals, um the students. Still owe and and were unable to collect, um that gets referred to the homeless liaison so that they investigate if of the need. And try to assist the family in any way that they can.
How big a problem is this?
Um this year, with the Alacar, it's a little up there. So ballpark right now, I think we have about two hundred and eighty kids. The. We had three that reached seventy-five meals a month.
And is there, and I think I wrote also in here that there's some eligibility for uh donations or fix-up donations to mitigate some of that? How does that get managed?
So um if the community, anyone in the community wanted to um. Come forward with a donation for any student or student that hadn't have any, we would place it on a student.
So it's not like a mass fund that's collected and then somebody here arbitrarily makes decisions about what gets paid out. It's by name?
Right. We've, we've had some situation where a student may have money left over at the end, and the, and the parents will ask that that money be used to. Reduce somebody else's outstanding obligation. Yes. And and the reason for this is that, you know, there are some districts that a student may go up to the cashier. And and be denied lunch because, you know, you're overdrawn or um, you know, rather than taking the lunch, you're given a. Or, you know, rather than taking the lunch, you're given a cheese sandwich or something along those lines. And again, we don't do those, those things. As Eva said, that, that, the, the challenge is that it, it does allow students to build up, in some cases, you know, a hefty balance. Ninety percent of those get paid off before they graduate because we require them to take care of all of their student outstanding obligations prior to getting their graduation count. So there's, you know, a line. And as Eva said, we, we do a lot during the school year to encourage our students and parents to please, you know, pay up your, your, your debts.
So the food service director runs reports daily. She will reach out via email to families. If she's running into challenges or no communication back, she reaches out to the administration for assistance. Guidance will get involved. We recommend that people fill out free and reduced because life changes happen and you never know. So, and they might qualify or they may not have qualified in the past, so.
So is it, is it safe to say that at the end of the day, by the time they graduate, either it gets resolved because it's a debt that can be resolved? Or it gets referred to somebody who can work through whatever social systems are available to resolve it?
Yeah.
There's nobody not getting their diploma?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, no, everybody gets their diploma.
So, one way or another, there's an appropriate resolution built into this?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, is there any other, any comments or other questions about this policy? From the board?
And again, this, this language really reflects the current legal language as opposed to anything.
Okay, hearing none, let's move on to the last one.
And the last one is in regards to credit for online courses. In two thousand twenty, the board approved a policy for awarding credit for online courses following state of Connecticut mandate that we make sure that we provide our students with options for online courses. So to be consistent with the law, we wanted to make sure we did that. What the, the additional blue underlined statements simply provides some context because what we're finding is that as online courses are now part of the landscape for high school students, there is an abundance of choices up there. Some of them rigorous and challenging and some of them falling far below the expectations that we would hold for students at Ram. So you'll notice that we're asking that the online criteria meet at least one of the four criteria listed there. So it's a course that's not offered at Ram High School. It's a, the high school does offer the course, but the student's unable to take the course due to an unavoidable scheduling conflict. The principal determines that the student requires a differentiated or accelerated learning environment with agreement from the students, teachers, and parents, guardians. We may have a student who requests to take an advanced math course that is not currently offered at their grade level. So they can advance in, in mathematics, which obviously tends to build upon the previous courses. Or the student has failed the course and wishes to recover credit. So we're just putting some, some guidelines on what's a policy that's already there. You'll notice that we didn't take anything out of the policy. We're just simply adding some of those criteria. And then on the, the second page, we did add that the principal or his, his or her designees has determined that given the student's academic and disciplinary history, the student is appropriately suited to engage in online coursework. We want to make sure that we're not setting students up for failure because there are some students that may thrive in an in-class course, but maybe not be well-suited for online. They haven't been successful in the past. So we want to make sure that it's a good fit for the students and we're not forcing them into learning environments that aren't going to meet their academic needs.
Okay, any comments or concerns on this policy? Or questions? Okay, hearing none. Let's, just a quick note on time, we're about ten minutes behind where we probably should be based on the schedule. So just going forward, everybody, brevity is our friend. We are moving on to ten point six, the financials.
Okay, so in ten point six, you have, the first financial is basically, I'm projecting a net favorable position of two hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. In the next few weeks, we are doing a good drill down of open purchase orders and ensuring that amounts are still valid and/or if adjustments need to be made. So we might have more availability to report in, in May's board meeting. For revenue, we had unanticipated student placement. So we receive, we are expected to receive two thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents in revenue, as well as four thousand dollars for students from East Hampton who are attending our pipeline manufacturing program. Our capital improvement fund has no significant changes at the moment. We have the anticipated completion of the HVA project. And as of today, or as of Thursday, the project has been completed. So I'm expecting to see invoices based on the work that's done. So in May, you'll see that fund have less availability. The capital not, not recurring fund, the town manager is still reaching out to the DOT. And there's communication back and forth, but there's no settlement on the project as of yet. And people services is continually tracking and changing POs based on the IEP process and, and behavioral changes that might be happening during this beautiful weather that might change placements for students. Are there any questions based on what I have reviewed? Hearing none, on ten point six B is the Ram Middle School and High School Student Activity Report. The balance is, balance with, or reconcile with the bank account as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Are there any questions in regards to the management or activity? So hearing none, ten point six B is the school service monthly sale and expenditure. We're doing well. We're, we're, seem to be increasing our net income for this fiscal year, which I'm very pleased about. And also ecstatic to report that the state and the federal government have come up with because of the supply chain issues and the higher cost and not being able to receive the, the DOD commodities, which in turn give us a higher cost. Every school district had till April fifteenth to apply or accept a grant. And regional school district is slated to receive approximately twenty-six thousand dollars. Now, having stated that, if a school district did not meet the timeline of the April fifteenth, which was a hard deadline, the money that is not spoken for will be reallocated. So it's possible that we might be able to get more than the twenty-six thousand dollars. But all of that money is to stay in the food service account. It is to help us buy those higher need items that unfortunately, because DOD, fresh foods and vegetables might, unfortunately, having issues for supply chain and/or labor shortages that we can purchase at a different vendors and pay the asking price as opposed to the negotiated price that the DOD offers us.
Nice.
So any questions on the food service monthly report for March? Hearing none, thank you very much.
All right. All right, eleven, committee reports.
We have ten seven, the Marlboro Walk.
Oh.
That's the additional.
Sorry, yes, my bad, thank you very much for that.
I, I think it might be more a support, a, a, a community supportive mental health walk.
Okay. Walk for mental health, okay. So I think, is it Sue, Sue that you raised this?
Yeah, I raised, I'll turn it over to Judy, if that's okay. And Judy, are you okay taking this one?
Yeah, yeah, sure. So, so as I said, this conversation has been going on for a long time. The reason that we're looking at Marlboro for the first week of June is Marlboro runs many events around the lake. It's just the perfect distance. I live over here, so I go through that traffic all the time. There are, you know, there's runs, there are walks, there are cyclists. So I, I reached out to Greg Lowry and Sue, and Sue reached out to AHM. And our, I can tell you, our town is very supportive. Greg is, and then a gentleman who I just met, Jay Keigho, if anybody knows him, I guess he runs all of our safety and oversight. And, you know, he, he spoke about just keeping him updated to make sure he knows what to do, you know, with streets. He thinks that just what he has for assistance is probably, probably appropriate, but he knows how to man these things. And the reason we're not decided on the exact day is we're waiting to hear back from Parks, Parks and Rec Ray, Ray Bull because there are a couple of things happening at the, oh my goodness, the pavilion. And so we're, what Greg Lowry and the other gentleman, they suggested that we, you know, we pick the best time that works with all of that. And they feel like they can accommodate a lot of parking, that they've done it before. NAMI is supportive, which is the National Association of Mental Illness. And then AHM reached out and they want to speak with Sue and I tomorrow. So what we're looking for is that it can be a supported or by supported meaning verbal support of a community. And, and I think the, the, oh, we also have Teresa Briesjo is on the team. There are a bunch of people actually. Catherine Assanto, I guess, is a screen printer, graphic designer. And the proposal right now is you're not alone with kind of, you know, a reputable phone number or website. And that, that people could have for information, that there'd be a small fee to walk just to pretty much cover the T-shirts. And then the additional amount would go to either AHM or NAMI or, or both. It, you know, it wouldn't, that's, and we're hoping to do it basically to raise community awareness, not really to raise money. You asked me to be brief, is that brief enough?
No, that was fantastic, thank you. I, I had a couple of quick questions. So the, if we're, look, you're, you're targeting the event for June. When, when do people, when would people probably sign up for this? Because it feels like maybe, maybe our May meeting with a, with an official kind of motion, maybe that's, maybe that's the appropriate timing to communicate this the strongest. Or I, I'm just trying to figure out, do we, is it, is it appropriate to make a motion tonight to support this? Or?
I, I think we should do tonight because as soon as, you know, a lot of people are doing a lot of things. You know, Sue had a lot of contacts to reach out to and with AHM. And we want to get it on social media and people's calendars as soon as possible. So, so I think it'd be preferable to get it tonight. As I said, we were going to join the NAMI date. But, and we know that with weekends, something is going to be problematic for people. But we think it's the best, the best date that does, is in high school or college graduations. So I, I mean, what we're looking for, and certainly, you know, would, would take as much help if Penny or any, anybody wanted, you know, a voice at the table. It's a pretty, it's not a huge thing. It's more about you matter, you're not alone, and raising awareness because we realize we don't have a lot of time. And so we're not, we're, we're not overdoing it.
Okay, so is there, what's the motion, I guess?
Well, I think the motion would be to, that we, that we could say, which we probably would want to say anyway, but the Ram community, you know, event. Because we, we've had a lot of hardship in, in the Ram community. So I think it's, I think it's more like ceremonial or not that we're really asking to do anything other than to, to be in support at this point. And, and certainly, you know, Mike, you and Scott are always available by, by texting and everything. You know, we've already thought about the traffic and if, if police are needed, you know, about, about a lot of, a lot of the things. So we're not anticipating asking Ram for anything at this point.
Okay, so like I said, I guess what I'm just looking for is what's, what, what, what motions? What statement, what, what's the motion statement? Just so we, as we make a, even if it's ceremonial, what, what, what do we, so we can do a discussion and then vote?
So I think this, the motion would maybe be, I make a motion to support a community walk that supports mental health throughout the Ram region and beyond.
Okay. I don't, just want to be, I just want, I, I agree with that. Like, okay, let's just, I, I agree with that motion, but might have some questions about it. Is there a second for that?
I'll second, Sue.
Okay, discussion?
Do we need a motion?
It's, I mean, it's a ceremonial, it's, but I, but the only question I had about this is, I just want to be careful about using the word support because that sort of, I feel like maybe there might be some indication that we're obligating ourselves to something. Is there a better word than support?
Can we endorse it? I'd say endorse, yeah.
Endorse, maybe, endorse a community walk?
Sure, that's, that's fine. And, and Sue, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I'm fine with endorsed.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion about this motion? All right, so the motion is to endorse a community walk for community mental health support in the Ram community and beyond. Let's go, the, a, a voice vote, all in favor? Hi, any opposed?
I'll take an interesting.
Okay, Eric abstains. That motion carries. All right, thank you. All right, committee reports. We are at the, what, what time is it, nine o'clock? All right, so we look like we're, we're in okay shape. We've got up a little bit here. Committee reports, facilities, safety and transportation.
Nothing new to report. Our next meeting is April twenty-sixth, where I'm hoping that we'll have an opportunity to go through votes.
Absolutely.
Quotes for assessment of the, the athletic field.
Correct, okay. Finance, audit, compliance, and insurance committee. Lori's not with us. Is anybody, either Dr. Benson Clark or Mary or Eric, anybody have any input on that?
No.
Yeah, we just didn't have our, our, our last meeting because we were in the middle.
Okay. Negotiations, I don't think there's any negotiations occurring at this time, so we're okay there. Anything to add to that, Dr. Benson Clark?
No, not at this time.
Okay, policy, again, Jessica's not with us today, but either Carrie or Gabe, anything that we need to discuss?
Yeah, so our last meeting was, I'm not sure the exact date. I believe it was right before March board meeting.
Yep.
And we basically were informed of the policies that we noted on previously, eligibility for participation in co-curricular activities, school lunch charging, and credit for online courses.
Okay. All right, thank you. And program communication, Mary?
We have a meeting coming up this week on Thursday.
Okay. Facilitators, Eastcon, Dr. Benson Clark?
I'm just, just to share that there's an interim executive director at Eastcon. And there's a search for executive director for Eastcon at this, at this time. And nothing, nothing new other than what you've been getting to report on.
Okay, that's same thing for Kate?
Yes, yes, you should all be receiving the mail from Kate, yes.
Yep. Okay. Move on to public comment, again, I ask you this every meeting, but do I need to read this again?
No, because we've read it once.
Okay. Item number 12, public comment. Is there anybody present, please?
Again, my name is Carol Guyer. I am representing the Hebron Coalition on diversity and equity. And I was here to support the students and their presentation for the modification to the Columbus Day holiday. I'm a little disappointed, as you can imagine. I'm mostly disappointed that the students really didn't have any opportunity to respond to the questions. There weren't any questions. I heard some very heartfelt comments, and I appreciate that. Code would, I don't think I'm stepping out of line here to say that Code would assist with, one of our goals is to increase community awareness. And some of the comments that I did hear tonight were, I thought, simplistic and lacked any real appreciation for the fact that when white people arrived here within a small amount of time, a couple of hundred years by the time of the revolution, native, native indigenous people were run off of their land and out of their homes. And in a place like Hebron, Marlboro, Andover, where there's a huge, rich history of indigenous populations here, and today, very little. I think there's an awareness factor that we could probably help you address. And I definitely could reach out, we'll reach out to Scott if that's something for like. I think that it would be wonderful if we could tell the students that at some point, this could be reconsidered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, is there anybody else present? Yes, please.
All right, so I, just regarding.
Could you identify yourself, please, I'm sorry?
Sorry, I'm Jason Harrington, I'm from Hebron.
Thank you.
Student at Ram. I would like to speak about the Columbus Day issue. So I, I have read and, and studied Columbus personally and that sort of history of this very extensively. I've written about it in the Rampler newspaper. And I would just like to say that studying this, I think that this change to Indigenous Peoples' Day would not be a good change. I've, I've, you know, I've studied this extensively. And I think that pinning the sort of, the, the real sort of injustices that Native Americans have based from, you know, throughout history. I think that pinning that on Columbus is frankly, just inaccurate historically. Columbus personally showed a lot of grace towards Native Americans. He, he, you know, he did things such as punish fellow Spaniards who, who would abuse natives. And he showed a lot of sympathy to them. And I think that making this change is not representative of, of actual history. You know, looking through primary sources and that sort of thing. I don't think that it is, is good to pin any sort of historical guilt on Columbus because he personally was not the one who committed any sort of atrocities. And just to speak on the point of, of changing it to Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day specifically, I personally don't think that that is a very good idea because it's just sort of watering down Columbus Day. And I don't, I oppose Indigenous Peoples' Day because it's, I, I don't like the idea of having a, a holiday that sort of celebrates like a racial group as like a monolith. I don't think that that's very good. I don't think that's representative of our values. And I know that I've spoken to, you know, a lot of people, and they don't think that this is, I, I think that they view Columbus Day as just a nice holiday, and they don't really see why it's so volatile. I don't know, that's just my two cents. I, I oppose changing Columbus Day, and I, I thank the board for making that decision, and I, I, I support it, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else present? Yes, sir.
Can I just have a follow-up comment?
If you could just identify yourself again and then certainly.
On my movie comment.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, could you identify yourself again and then certainly?
Gary got here?
Problem.
Was it in Hebron?
Perfect, thank you.
I'm just following up on my comment earlier on the use of the movies as a teaching tool in school here. And, you know, comments followed up after I had made mine somewhat dismissing what I had come to the board to express was what I felt was a pretty serious concern. And, you know, the arguments on the other side is, it's a form of critical thinking. And I just feel as though when you look at some of these movies, and I won't get into the details, but there's several of those movies that are much more manipulative in their portrayal of some of the subject matter. And it's not really a child's play to try to make sense of what is being presented. I just find some of these movies somewhat embellish the facts. They don't give all of the facts, and they portray one side of the story and not necessarily multiple stories. And I think that's somewhat too much of an influence today's, to today's youth. And I think we have to look at that a little bit more carefully before we put that into the schools as a method to teach our children. You know, the motorcycle diaries, if you look a little bit into the details of that particular movie, it, for the most part glamorized the terrorists and talks about him as a revolutionary. And I just have real issues with that. And that's one movie out of the four that I mentioned earlier that really have some, some messages there that I think are inappropriate to be used in a school setting. And when I went to school, movies were a form of entertainment, a lot of humor in there and more cartoons. Now we're using them as a method to replace the teacher. And I just think that there has to be a serious look at these movies before they're introduced, if they should even be used at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online here? Yes. I'm sorry, what's the name?
Lily, Lily Rhodes with, in Hebron.
Please go ahead.
I have three things. One is, I encourage the students to continue to educate us about the, the complex issue regarding the Columbus versus Native American versus whatever naming of the holiday. It's, it is a complicated issue, and I, I commend them for, for trying to educate us about that. I have to say, I, I don't see any benefit to dismissing the disrespect it shows to our Native American neighbors to dismiss their concerns around this issue. And I commend the whole school system for addressing this as regards the Raptors, the name versus the Sachems name. And, and I know it's complicated, I know it's sensitive, but I hope the students are able to come back to us with some more information on that. A second issue is regarding the smart pass that's been discussed this evening. What contingency is there for electronic failure? I'm not asking for an answer for that right now, but it just occurs to me, there's a huge presumption of reliable electronic communication as regards the benefit of, of this program. And the third thing that I want to ask about has to do with scholarships for the overnight trips. I am hopeful that there are robust scholarship opportunities for students to participate in the overnight trips and also the athletic programs. Because we know from the studies we've done on housing in Hebron that a lot of people, residents of Hebron, which is where I am, are financially distressed with the, having to pay significantly more than 30% of their income for housing, which means they don't have a lot of money available for things like trips to France or wherever and athletic fees. So I would hope that those issues are also compassionately addressed by the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online to present for public comment? Eric, seeing anyone? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to item number 13, the informational items are presented. Scott, anything that we need to cover in these?
No.
That being the case, I guess any questions from the board regarding the informational items, either the calendar of events or student discipline? All right, that being the case, is there a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion, Gabe marks.
Gabe makes a motion for adjournment, any second?
Second that.
All right, who was that, Carrie?
Yes.
And let's do a voice vote, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.